All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the May Planning Commission Meeting to order. We're gonna start with our normal housekeeping items. Mr. Jackinmore, if you would, can you take the role for us?
Governor Miller.
Here.
John Dackenmore here, Cody Black. Chair Moppe. Corey Hatley.
Here.
Lou Guffield.
Here.
John Cho.
Here.
Dylan Edgill. And Justin Coffey. We have a court.
We have a court. Thank you, sir. All right. We also have the minutes from last, the last month's meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept those.
No motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, all those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. All right. We have no old business, but let's move on to item number one here. It's the special use permit to install an off-premise sign on 108 Marina Road submitted by Emmett Barnes. Sarah, take it away.
Yes, absolutely. So this is, like you said, a special use permit to replace a billboard over there at Marina and West Main. The existing conditions that this is located at that intersection, it is adjacent to a small duplex development, the area includes a mixture of single-family homes along Marina Drive and then undeveloped commercial parcels on the east side of Main Street. It is zoned R2 medium-density residential and it's situated in an area characterized as mixed zoning classifications. You've got R1 to the west, you've got C4 to the east and the northeast and then you have, or northwest, and then C2 to the northeast. And again, this is an R2 property, so you've definitely got a mixture of zoning in that area. It does lie just south of Union Pacific Railroad along the commercial corridor on Main Street. And then as you turn onto Marina Road, this serves as a primary gateway into really a predominantly single-family residential area of town. So as we were going through the review comments, the applicant is proposing to replace the existing billboard with an off-premise sign which is in conformance with the regulations in approximately the same location as the current billboard. Upon approval, the applicant will need to obtain approval from RDOT and obtain the signed permit prior to commencing with construction. Because they are in compliance with city regulations, they should be able to obtain that RDOT permit. An off-premise, non-digital sign, which this is proposed to be non-digital, those are permitted by a special use permit. We are classifying this as a double-post pole sign even though there's, at the bottom of that image, you'll see that there's kind of a monument where it's gonna say "I heart Russellville," which we're all familiar with that design. But then they have those two poles separating the base from where their sign is, and that's why that led us to classify this as a double-post pole sign. And it's erected and maintained on a freestanding frame, and it's not attached to any building structure or the ground. It does meet the sign dimensions, which is 150 square feet, which is the maximum allowed within, for an off-premise sign. The proposed height is only 17.3 feet, which is within that allowable 35-foot limit. Technically, they could have two signs on the property because it is a dual-frontage road. They are only proposing one sign. If they wanted to propose a second sign, it would have to be at least 250 feet from this sign. And then just, any illumination, so we were pointing out that if any illumination is proposed, it shall comply with night sky requirements, not exceed 150 watts or 2,700 lumens, no exposed lamps or tubes shall be permitted, and any externally, external illumination should only illuminate the sign and not have any spill over, so it doesn't impact the neighborhoods in the area. It is the recommendation for you all to approve this application with the following conditions: to apply for and obtain that ATAG permit from RDOT and obtain a signed permit from the city upon approval by RDOT. As a result of the findings that the requirement is for an off-premise, non-digital sign, the requirements have been met, the applicant has committed to complying with RDOT requirements, and the location is appropriate given the historic use of the site. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Sarah. Emmett, you got anything you want to add to any of that?
If you all have asked me a question.
Okay. All right. Okay, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. Okay. All right, second item. Yep. Have good night, Emmett. Replat of parts of lots five and six, block 111 of the JL Shen addition located at 301 East H Street submitted by Wong Garcia on behalf of Block-by-Block Acquisitions LLC. Victoria, you've got staff report on that for us?
I do. So as stated, this is a replat at 301 East H Street. Existing conditions, this is located in the Parker neighborhood. The current property contains a single-family home. This property is being subdivided and replatted to create one lot for the existing single-family home and a second vacant lot. The property is surrounded by single-family homes and Valley Christian School to the southwest. This property is zoned R3 medium-high-density residential and surrounding properties are zoned R3 and R2. In our review, typically these kind of applications are, for replats of existing lots, would be approved at the staff level. However, staff does not have the authority to accept dedications of right-of-way, and that's kind of highlighted on that picture there with the yellow box. The current plat shows the property ownership extending about eight feet into the East H Place right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to dedicate this approximately eight feet, give or take, of right-of-way in order to dedicate their portion of the right-of-way. They are dedicating adequate right-of-way along the northern portion, along the northern property line in an acceptable alignment for East H Place. And the GIS department did review the legal description, and the legal description closes and the plat is acceptable. And then as required by the Land Subdivision and Development Code, they have complied with all the requirements for information to be included on the plat as outlined by Section 5.3.11. So pretty quick and easy, staff does recommend forwarding this recommendation to the City Council for approval of the final plat and acceptance of the public right-of-way as a result of the findings that the final plat will conform with the final plat requirements outlined in Section 5.4 of the Land Subdivision and Development Code prior to being recorded. The plat complies with the requirements of Section 5.3.11 of the Land Subdivision and Development Code. And then lastly, the dedication of adequate right-of-way is in an acceptable location from the center line of the road. Are there any questions for staff?
Thank you, Victoria. Dave, you have anything you want to add there?
I have a question.
Okay. Commissioners, you have any questions? What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of approving this as presented, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. All right. Item number three, vacation of South Greenwich right-of-way adjacent to lots six and seven, block nine of the Oakland Heights addition submitted by Barrett and Associates on behalf of Eddie Rude. Sarah, you have staff report?
Yes, sir. As stated, this is a vacation of right-of-way. It is at 816 South Greenwich. The existing conditions are that a neglected single-family home had previously existed on the property. City, after numerous attempts to work with the owner for rehabilitation, had this demolished. So now the new owner wants to construct a triplex on the property. Property is zoned R2 medium-density residential with all surrounding properties also zoned R2 medium-density residential. This is primarily a mixed residential community with single-family and duplex dwellings. Directly behind this property is a duplex and quadplex development. The review comments are that there are three separate items that we consider when we are considering a vacation of right-of-way. First are, what are the public benefits? What is the impact of the proposed vacation upon the public trust functions of the right-of-way? Does the vacation impair circulation, access, utilities, open space, and reviews? No, this proposal just seeks to vacate 10 feet of an existing 80-foot right-of-way. In this area, we have 80-foot right-of-ways which are excessive. The city doesn't have any plans for this portion of the right-of-way. And this lot is only, this lot, in order for the applicant to build a triplex, is 500 square feet short of the size required to permit that triplex, which is a permitted use in an R2 zone. Then, nothing's proposed in the area. And as you'll notice with this picture, I went out and took a picture of the foundation because staff did work with the applicant who did not necessarily recognize that there was this discrepancy, thought it was just a simple review, and had foundations set to be poured. And so we allowed them to move forward at their own risk. A duplex could be easily constructed on this with the existing size of the property. However, with nothing proposed, they did line that structure up with adjacent structures. As you can see, it is in line with that adjacent structure, so it won't look any different from that neighborhood perspective. And then during their review process, we did recommend that they go through this vacation of right-of-way and confirm that there were no conflicts with city projects coming up. So land use impacts is the second thing that we do need to consider. The vacation gives the owner the ability to construct that triplex, as I stated, instead of a direct replacement with a single-family or just a duplex at this location. And it is currently under construction. I already stated that it's gonna be in line with the previous, like, with the other properties in the area. And then the request does not include utility company letters. We did not receive those, and so we are recommending to vacate the right-of-way but to retain an easement just in case a utility company has a line in that location. Based on the applicant's proposals, you can see here, they're still setting that triplex, what would now be 35 feet from the property line instead of 25 feet. The only thing that would be constructed within this 10-foot vacated area is one, single parking space, and concrete or asphalt is something that is typically found over utility lines if something were to occur and had to be replaced. The applicant has indicated where the, like, the fiber optic lines and the gas lines and the sewer mains are. It does appear that they're not within this area. However, without anything from the utility companies to verify that, we are recommending retention of an easement to cover that 10 feet. And then finally, the public benefits received by vacating the right-of-way is that we would then return this property to the property owner, and they would have maintenance authority over this portion of the right-of-way, and it wouldn't be up to the city to go in and maintain that area. And it does allow the applicant to construct a triplex instead of just a duplex or a single-family on this property. With those items, it is our recommendation that you forward this to City Council to approve, for approval to vacate 10 feet of that 80-foot right-of-way along South Greenwich adjacent to lots six and seven of the Oakland Heights addition with the following condition: to retain the entire 10 feet along the frontage of lots six and seven as a public utility easement. As a result of the findings that there is not an impact to the public trust, land use, or effects to the public benefit, no letters from the utility companies provided by the applicant releasing use of the area to be vacated, and this is a reduction to the right-of-way, not a total vacation. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Sarah. Dave, you got anything you want to add? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have one question. Is it normal to go ahead and have a project already started and not knowing that about the easements?
Turn your microphone.
Is it normal for a...
To answer your question if it's normal, typically, they, we would not release building permits if there were any conflicts. We do, in times, allow people to move forward with the project at their own risk. And since we didn't see any conflicts with them moving forward because their building line for the structure is with, is at the same place as if they didn't vacate that right-of-way, and so they're not building further out into the right-of-way. So we did not see any conflicts with that, and that's why we let them move forward at their own risk.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Commissioners, let's get to work.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Oh, we have a second. And all those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. Okay. Item number four, Zone text amendment to adopt proposed changes to the Russell Zoning Code submitted by City of Russellville. Sarah John Dahl, take it away.
Absolutely. So you know, every quarter, we have a long-range planning committee that meets. We discuss potential proposals, updates to the zoning code or the Land Subdivision Development Code, and we review if there's anything that we need to adjust. On April 15th, the Long Range Planning Committee met to discuss proposed changes, and then these following items are being forwarded to you all for consideration. An update to Article 2.3.1, which updates to allow an ADU as permitted by the ADU allowance in Article 3.1. You all heard this last time with our proposed updates. However, the state law was making adjustments, and so we pulled this portion of the existing, of the previous recommendations so that we could make it align with the state law that was, that has now been enacted. And I'll go into that in just a minute on what those changes were. Article 3.1.8.2 classification, and an Article 12 definition was omitted with the 2022 zoning code updates, and it's just being added back to the regulations. And then Article 3.1, accessory dwelling units. So this is what I was just referencing with the Article 2.3.1 changes. You all previously heard this. You know that accessory dwelling units can support multi-generational housing, affordable housing opportunities, efficient land use, provide for lower construction costs. And that, since we had pulled this because the state was making changes, we updated this proposal to align with the state requirements, that ADUs be outright permitted in every zone, and be no more than 75% of the heated and cooled square foot of the primary structure or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. And so those were the things that were adopted as Act 313 by the state, and so we made sure our ADU regulations aligned with that, which is now state law. And then finally, we have one update to the Land Subdivision and Development Code. This is Article 12, water and wastewater extensions outside city limits. This update provides clear guidance on the conditions for connecting to city water and our sewer services outside the city limits and aligns with recent considerations in the state legislature. In the past, staff have recommended tying service connections to annexation, which benefits property owners through reduced home insurance rates due to the city's fire department's excellent rating despite limited assurance of adequate fire protection facilities. This policy helps address that gap by requiring those seeking city services to build according to city standards and to voluntarily annex once eligibility criteria are met. This is in line with what was being discussed and considered at the state legislature this year, and so we went ahead and are moving this forward to help provide guidance to staff and the city as we move forward with those. So as a result, we do recommend that you forward this to City Council with a recommendation of approval to update the Russell Zoning Code Articles 2.3.1, 3.1.4 through 3.1.7, 3.1.8.2 and Article 12, and to update the Land Subdivision and Development Code Articles 12.1.3 and 12.1.4. As a result of the findings that the Long Range Planning Committee recommends these additions and updates, the proposed updates align with the state legislation for accessory dwelling units. The updates provide clear guidance to staff, and changes are consistent with the objectives outlined in Reimagine Russellville 240 Comprehensive Plan, the Russell Zoning Code, and the Land Subdivision and Development Code. Do you all have any questions for me?
Could you repeat all that again?
I absolutely could, however.
I'm kidding. No, that's, all right. Would you take action on that, or is that just in, okay? All right. Guys, let's, I'll entertain a motion to accept these changes, guys. Gals? While they're deliberating on that, I'm gonna, I am gonna point out that, and I'm gonna say this for the record or whatever, but Sarah, you've done a bang-up job. I don't know how in the world you can keep all this straight. I mean, that's, that's a lot, that's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things that have to interlock, that have to work together, and change is not easy, but you have, you make it a lot simpler for us, anyway. I appreciate that. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Sarah, any questions for clarification on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on, I know that the test has utilized the same driveway as the residential. Right. How do we address if they're parking on the street, if that's an outside, if it's utilized as a, maybe not as a care package, as a rental or something like that? How do we address that? And then the other more kind of in the plan, if that additional dwelling is on a corner lot, like a, the old cherry shops or whatever it used to be, there might want to be some place we could always do that, but another driveway would be possible to that. Kind of thought about that, that it's gonna be special occurrences if we look at that, and do we have flexibility to allow that if we put that?
I do think we potentially need to go through a variance, but we can always look at that if we get a lot of requests for variances with this. I don't know that we will get a lot of variance requests. However, you know, with everything with the zoning code, we definitely always look at it. We're having these quarterly meetings to make sure that we're addressing. If we have a lot of variance requests on that, we would be coming back with an update to that. As far as parking within the local streets, parking on the street is permitted within the city, and so if they're parking illegally or if it's causing an issue, we'll have to look at parking requirements in that area. Maybe if the street is too narrow, we say parking is restricted to one side of the street if it becomes an issue, but that's kind of more on a case-by-case basis.
And I'm in support of this. I just think, well, if it does move to this and we do start kind of populating these areas and that, these ADUs, that part of that, maybe explaining that to the developer, whoever's doing that, so they know that upfront, so maybe we're not having these, to come back to variances and things, and maybe a little bit more explanation when people are applying to, you know, hopefully to put these in.
Yes.
We've already kind of got that out in front of them before we have to, before we come back as a variance. And I don't know that that needs to be necessarily in the code, but I think it would be helpful to the developer, to the homeowner, if they, that's already explained to them, you know, from our side, so it doesn't come back to us at some point later. Probably will.
Typically, anyone who's trying to develop, if they come to our office, we try to walk through what the requirements are, kind of explain the process, try to help, guide people as best we can. That's what we do a lot of the time, answering questions and guiding in our office, anyway. And we'll absolutely be working through this, and if we need to make adjustments, we can always come back and make adjustments.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think you just, I'm thinking something where the developer, what would have to come through, maybe through various, if they already know that they can access that, where they don't have to come in to walk through it, but maybe it's already out there, so speed the process up a little bit potentially. And I know that's several steps ahead, but I, those things that would speed the developer, make it more convenient for them to look at and go with it. And that's just, that's more opinion, it's not really a recommendation.
But if it's something that you're considering here and now, it, I don't know that staff would be opposed to just striking 4A and just not requiring them to share that same access and leaving it up to what the developer is. I mean, if they have space on their property and they don't have to share that, I don't know that we would be opposed to that. We were just trying to put it in line with, to make it more palatable to other, to people within the community. But now that the state has said that they're outright permitted in every zone, it might be something that we would maybe should consider.
I think it's compellible to believe that it is, because you're not gonna want two driveways in front of somebody's home in a neighborhood that has a small neighborhood. So I think you're gonna get more resistance, even though the state has mandated that we have to follow this law. You're gonna get more resistance and more people coming in with concerns over there. So I would, I would not want that at all.
Yeah. So don't start that. Yeah, I agree.
I think the reason, the reason we didn't want to do that, we didn't want to have two separate driveways, is because if there is a traffic problem, that problem's gonna be on the driveway that the owner also owns. So they're more apt to take care of that problem as opposed to if it's separate.
If you would, Dave, if you could.
Sorry, Dave Garza. So if we have separate driveways, and then there becomes a problem, the owner's not really that concerned because it's not affecting them. But if they're together and there's, there is a problem, that owner's gonna take care of it because it affects him or her personally. And so that's why we wanted to keep it together.
I'm not saying to keep it together, but I know there's even, Bill Brownhouse has Carrie's house on one street and your driveway on the other. If there are some instances where that, that would... But there are some instances where that, that would apply, not, that in the right instance that is, that would be allowed on a case-by-case basis.
Right. Yeah, and I think that's where the Board of Adjustments would come in, because then we'd be looking at traffic patterns, traffic density, sight, vision, and all of that together to make sure that it's compatible.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
My pleasure.
Okay. We have motion to approve. There are here a second. We have a second. All those in favor, acknowledge by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. We have a couple of announcements here to be made by Ms. Sarah.
Yes. Looking forward at the schedule, July 3rd is the July, scheduled July Planning Commission meeting. That is Thursday, July 3rd, prior to July 4th. It is also during the dead weeks for Russellville School District. So we are preemptively canceling the July Planning Commission meeting. If we get requests for applications and we have to move forward, we may consider doing a special-called meeting at a later time. But we felt we're always trying to get quorum at that meeting anyway, and this would just be a preventative measure to avoid that possibility. So July 3rd is canceled. Schedule your vacations as needed. And then I did just want to make an announcement that tomorrow is, well, today, we kicked off National Preservation Month, and we are kicking off National Preservation Month in a fun way with our Historic District Commission's Ice Cream Social. That's tomorrow from 12:30 to 2:00 down at the Russellville Depot. Would love to have you come down, stop by, get some ice cream. The judge is going to do a proclamation, officially kicking off Preservation Month, and then look for different tours throughout the month for what we are doing to celebrate preservation. But did want to invite you all and let you know that that is happening at the depot tomorrow at 12:30. Thank you.
We don't have any other business. We are adjourned.